Okay, perfect. I will call this meeting to order at 6:32. And at this time, I ask for any public comment.
Okay, I don't see anybody in the meeting, but let me jump over here. It looks like there's one person watching. But I don't see any comments or anything here yet, so I think you're good to go.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move on. Would someone like to review our norms, please?
Can do that.
Cory. Oh Cory, you muted yourself.
Whoops, okay. Hold on a second, let me try that again. Okay, as a board, we will focus on student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, and run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Anthony. Any discussion? I did have a question regarding item B, the contract renewal. My question was regarding the fiscal year '23 and '24 salary that would be determined at a later date. Is that, that doesn't ring a bell as what we did last time, so I was wondering about that.
Sure. So I typically would have put percent increases in there for the next couple of years. But we are, I'm working with Laura Walkinshaw, who's our Human Resources Director, to revamp our performance management system for a number of different roles within our system, including principals, and we're just starting that process. And part of what we're talking about is the idea that for an increase would at least to some extent be driven by performance. And so, given the fact that I'm not sure where that's going to land, and I want to be able to have as much flexibility in the future around incorporating salary into performance, which we, we don't typically do that. I wanted to leave it off for this year, but you should expect next year, for the remaining two years, to have a recommendation in there. Okay, so I just didn't want to find myself locked into trying to move forward with a new process and not being able to fully execute it. So it is not about Brooke at all, it's much more about a systemic shift.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That helps, thank you. Any other discussion?
I, I just have a question. Is there a basis in the model that you're looking to switch to?
Um, I, we haven't even started to outline it yet. But that's work that Laura and I are going to do. So do you mean like a basis, like a model that we're building off of?
Right.
She's going to present me with something because she's worked in a couple of other organizations, and we're going to use that as a starting point, but I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
I'm curious, is this something that other school boards are doing or districts are doing? Is it like, is it more common now?
Uh, I, I don't know. I haven't been talking to anybody about what they're doing or not doing. I know that there's wide variability in how, how people are compensated, how compensation is determined, as well as kind of performance management in general. It, it's widely variable.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, let's do, go move forward with a roll call. Cynthia?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
I don't know, Michael, if you're in or if you can hear us? Okay, um, I will say yes, and that will move us along. Okay, Randy, it's your turn.
Um, thank you. So you have my, my monthly update in your packet. I don't have anything to add to it specifically for you. Sometimes that happens, right, between when I submit it and when we meet, but I don't this month, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the report or talk to you about anything else related to what's in my report. You also have information from Brooke in her report, so feel free to ask any questions related to what she included as well. I will say that there's like, you know, sort of this notable shift to closing out the year, I think, at this point. I've encouraged our schools to look at opportunities to do creative, interesting, innovative, hands-on, you know, have, have those types of experiences to give kids an opportunity to interact and engage and to help them to stay focused and, and have a really positive end to the school year. There's a ton of work happening, as you saw in my report, about summer planning. And it is, you know, it is much easier said than done. And, you know, there's, there's certainly funding, there's funding for camps and programs, but many of them did not apply for funds. And, and, you know, we have a, we have a tired workforce. This year has taken a tremendous amount out of our teachers and our staff. And as they look ahead, they are needing and wanting and deserving of some space for them to recover and to restore and to relax. And so, finding, you know, Brooke's doing a great job with, with moving forward programming at Medowee, something it hasn't done before, so you can imagine that the administrative burden of trying to create a program that you've never done before without a lot of context. It's just, it's tough, you know, it isn't really about the money. It's mostly about how, what, what can we do, what do we have the staff for? And I don't know, Brooke, if you, if you've thought about hiring out other people, but, you know, I'm, I'm very open to the idea of putting an ad out, basically, for people to come in and give, give us a hand. But that's a big focus of our work right now, is getting to summer. You know, the COVID landscape is looking better. I just heard that there was approval this afternoon, I was at another meeting for, right, for Pfizer for 12 to 16-year-olds. So how quickly that gets executed, and it's just, the landscape is moving pretty quickly. But just so you know, I guess I would say to you, as board members, please understand that the school is doing as much as it possibly can to create programming for students in the summer. And they're working very, very hard to provide the best opportunity for your students, although it might, you know, I don't know how it will all play out, but I know that there are some, there's a feeling of like, anything is possible, and it is, except it's just a much more complicated process with many more variables than most people realize.
Yeah, that's a hard feeling, I think, really. Like, you think about that feeling of anything is possible as being such a wonderful feeling, but sometimes when anything is possible, it's like impossible to start. So, kudos. Go ahead, Brooke, I know you want to say something, but I just wanted to say thank you because, and acknowledge that that's a very hard and exciting place to start from.
I have to say that there's a group of people that are interested in helping to plan. We did put the packet out for Summer Packet last Thursday, and I can't believe the amount of returned registration forms. So there's definitely high energy and excitement from the students to join. And our themes have been decided and some really great details of making the opportunity for our students really engaging and fun. And there is some staffing that I was definitely excited about being there, and we may potentially need to put out posting if we have high numbers. And I'm anticipating that because they already had a lot of questions from parents, and students are really talking about it. So I'm really looking forward to planning it out with some really great field trips and opportunities for our students. And I want to thank all of you for your kind, thoughtful teacher appreciation gifts of the dessert, the breakfast items that you had for our staff. They really appreciated it, and your card was very kind, Julie, and we put those out next to the treats. So our teachers felt and staff felt very appreciated last week. So thank you all for contributing to that, to make it really fun for them.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Brooke, I just want to say that the bike program you did, it was also a success, and the kids really like it. So I really thank for that, too.
Yeah, a lot of parents reached out to me, and Bob's working on a press release right now, but I captured lots of pictures. I haven't posted them all, but some students went from riding training wheels to riding independently, and that just made them feel so good. So it was a very positive week. And we do have some really exciting things that we'll be announcing this week for the end of the year closure of making it a really fun and exciting end. We're planning a Merck Day, an outdoor learning day. We're planning a field day. And our last day of school, we're having Odds, Back and Come. It's a storyteller, and we're going to end our day with us together, listening to him for an hour. So our, the last week of school will be very exciting.
So awesome.
Does anybody have any other questions? I know I put stuff in there about reset planning and transition work we're doing. I, I just wanted to see if anybody had any other questions.
When, I know that there's some testing that is happening this week, and then the ESVACs just, you know, wound down, so I'm just wondering if there's any ballpark of when we would see any testing results.
That's very, so it's so interesting. I just literally met with Skylar about that today, and it's on a meeting agenda I have with all the principals on Wednesday. So what Brooke hasn't heard yet, nobody has, so any of the principals are listening, I want to have a sense of when everyone's wrapping up ESVAC and wrapping up iReady. And then I'm asking them to schedule a time with Skylar and me, either the week of May 24th, May 31st, or, you know, June, whatever, 7th, to, to review results. So depending on where things are, you may have information for the retreat, but you may not, since it's on June 7th. If not, as is typically the case, you'll get information in August. So everyone will be prepared in August to give the year-end progress towards goals and whether they achieved it, what their current data is, and what their goals are going to be. So that's really where you, in August, is when you should be expecting really clear, concrete data for, as a board. If there's anything we have by the retreat, we'll, we'll give you what we've got.
Perfect. Any other questions for Randy or Brooke? Okay. This is, well, other than the retreat, this is probably our last meeting that we're having during this school year. So just thank you guys all very much, and Brooke, make sure, please, to thank your staff. Okay, moving on, the next item is policy governance discussion. So Randy, I would ask you to speak a little on that, where we get rolling.
Sure. So, based on where we were at the end of last meeting, I connected with Jackie. She and I had a couple of meetings over the last couple of weeks to talk about her interest in doing, working in a policy governance consultant capacity with you. She was definitely interested. We talked about what that might look like. And typically, what we've, what we know works best is if, is if, you know, I work with you as a board, and she, she and I sort of plan the, the events, the meetings, the, uh, just the activities that you would do as a board, and then she would facilitate them. So what, so what I would like for you to do in preparation for June 7th, she's very willing to come to the retreat and spend some time with you, however much time you want. So that will be part of what I want you to think about today, is how much time do you want to devote to this at the retreat? But it would be, it would be a facilitated conversation with you about what you're really looking for as a board. And for her to be able to ask questions and kind of guide you to help get greater clarity about the work ahead over the course of the year. So what Julie and I talked about was that today, I would like for you as board members to think about, what is it that you think you need and want in order to get from where we are right now? Which is, yeah, we think we're, we think we're ready to, to do some work to move forward with the policy governance model of being a school board. And to the end, which would be, we've got all of the policies, and now we're operating as a board. It will, so that's kind of the, that's the scope of what, from here to there. And, and I want you to be able to talk about it collectively. What I do want you to, want to say to you, and I'll continue to say it to you, is that it is a work in progress. So even when we say we're going from here to there, there is still a journey. But you become, you just, you, you evolve over time, and you become stronger as a board, and you become more familiar. So it isn't like we've, we've made it. We're not kind of at that point. So, so I'd like to give you some time to start thinking about, what is the work, and for Anthony and Cynthia, I haven't done a lot of the work that we, we have done for the last couple of years with them. It may be, you're not even necessarily sure what that means. But for, so let me talk to you in a second. But for those of you who've done the work, I would ask you to think about what matters? What do you want to understand better? What are your concerns? What do you think you need? And for Cindy and Anthony, we want to get you up to speed a little bit, so we're going to give you some resources to use. Has Celeste given you books yet?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so part of the work will, will be probably at least a couple of meetings with Jackie to give you kind of an orientation type of starting point. But still be thinking about what is it you feel like you need? And it's okay if Cory is in a different place than you are, Anthony. Like, all of that information will be very helpful for me to share with Jackie, and then for us to really prepare for the retreat in June. Okay? Does that make sense to people? Okay, so I'm going to try to take notes. Scott, it's you and I on this. I don't know if Celeste told you, but she's not here. It's her birthday tonight, so we should probably wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
The birthday, Celeste.
But we all try to take notes and capture them, because I also want to give them to Jackie, so, okay? So I'll, I'll kind of turn it off and, and let you work together as a group on this, and I'll just take notes.
So I just want to point out, the board retreat we have right now penciled in 9 to 1, so we have four hours together. I think we were potentially going to try to put any regular meeting stuff into that time if we felt like we could, so that we wouldn't have to have another meeting the following week. I just want to point that out before we decide to start figuring out how much time we want to devote to what. We also will be continuing, I assume, on the engagement survey results and next steps. I don't imagine we're going to get all the way, like, we're not going to get all the way to the other end of that at this meeting. So we'll need to devote time to that as well. I also think it's important that we try to at least do a little bit of like team-building fun stuff, because that's, I just think that's, it may sound silly, but I think it's an important thing for us to do as a group of people that need to work nicely together.
I totally agree. It's important.
Okay. So does anyone have any thoughts on, on what we would like to get out of some time with Jackie? How much time and what specifically we're, we're thinking?
It might be easier, Julie, to flip it and do that on the other end. And because once you go through the process of talking to each other and figuring out what you want to try to accomplish, you'll have a scope, you'll be able to then think about, okay, these are the things, how much time do we think that will take? I think you should be able to make it all work, but it might, might be easier to frame it from the, the time at the end of the discussion. I don't know, could be wrong, but you might find that it, you feel like, oh, it's actually not a ton that we need from her at this first meeting, or it may feel like, wow, we really do need her for a lot to get our feet on the ground, just depending on where you are.
Okay.
Well, my, my question to that is how does the rest of the board feel about the work that was previously done?
I thought it was, I mean, it's still kind of all, kind of muddled. I mean, I, I guess I kind of get the concept that you use this policy governance framework to address anything that kind of come, at least this is my interpretation, anything that comes at us. Like, let's say, you know, we have to solve some kind of a problem. Someone comes to us with some conflict that we as a board have to tackle, and you have this framework with which to, to work. And I think it's, it's good because it, it adds consistency to how we approach things, which is good for liability and also just how we approach things. It's, I think, one of the things that kind of, it gets muddled to me is there's so many components to the policy governance. You have all these different sections, and then within the sections, there's so much. And until you've done it for a long time, like, you constantly have to refer to, you know, looking things up. And so to me, I mean, maybe this is oversimplifying it, but like, if we could have Jackie kind of almost boil it down into bullet points of what the different pieces of the different components are of the policy governance, and then maybe use a few conflicts that have been brought to us as a board, and use that structure to, like, how would we, how would we solve or handle a situation using policy governance? So it's like a hand-on, hands-on example of, of doing that. I don't know if that makes sense. Hopefully it does. But that would, like, for me, I'm able to learn something a lot better if, if, through using it, not just sitting there and trying to like memorize it, or like if we actually actively tried to use it in, in solving something, it might, it might make more sense. I don't know. That would be a thought.
For me, I was thinking that something that would give us confidence as a board going forward is to have her help us break it down into the benchmarks almost, too, so that how do we get all the way fully there? Because that has been something that people have struggled with. When to actually pull the plug and be completely with policy governance. So to kind of make it into baby steps for us, and that would give us a better handle on the little chunks. I think it's kind of similar to what Scott's saying.
That's all, you know, it's very interesting, because it's, because of Tocanic and Green being a couple of years ahead of you, it, it provides an opportunity, I think, for both Jackie and me to be able to talk to you about exactly what you're talking about. Because right now, literally, tomorrow night is going to be the first time that the board begins to analyze and interpret their first three board policies. So Jackie started last year with hers, and I've continued that, and now we are bringing the board on. So we've actually only interpreted three policies. We're going to do another one tomorrow night, which is emergency superintendent succession. So for instance, you know, it's going to be an interesting conversation, because I can talk to you about the journey, which I think will give you greater clarity. But it may be that, that I've, you know, I've done now emergency superintendent succession. So when we get to you, what I would likely do is share with you that interpretation for you to talk about and say, is this, does this make sense to you? Does it mean what you think it should mean? You know, we've done financial planning, and, and there's a number of them, but it's a slow, long, steady process, because they're literally just starting tomorrow. But I think all of that context, like, like I hear Scott saying, it's muddled. It's like, it's kind of overwhelming to find that path, and I think that's what you're saying, Cory. We can definitely handle that, and we can definitely support you in getting much greater clarity.
So I had, I mean, I was, I'm basically right there with you, Scott. I think I had written down three things that I was hoping to get from working with Jackie, and hopefully all at the retreat. And one of those was, my first one was like an orientation, an intro, so that the new people can, can hear it, and so that the, the old people can catch back up, because we had left it off a little. And maybe we can incorporate into that part the benchmarks, like the breaking it down for us, when we may expect different things to happen. My second thing that I was hoping would be to do a practice session, which is kind of, again, a review for us, like, that's, that's the work that we had done. So taking a specific conflict, either, you know, something that's just made up or something that's similar to something that we maybe have faced as a board, and then doing that practice of going through model policies and identifying whether or not that's dealt with and where, and if there, if we would need to change a policy in order to have that dealt with differently, and how we would do that. And then the third thing would be, and this, I, this is more of a question than anything, Randy, is like, would we at the retreat be able to put into place the placeholder policies of like the policy governance style placeholder policies that we would be working from until we amend any policies that we want to amend?
So I would say that I think that that should be part of what's talked about with Jackie. It's unlikely that you would do it at this particular meeting, but it's very possible that at, at your meeting in August, that you're able to take that step and do some additional work, which is, I think, exactly what you want. I think it's going to be too much for the 7th to do that, and I think you will be more engaged in the work if that's all you're doing at one meeting. And it's definitely doable to get it done.
Yeah, so if we have those policies, but they're not adopted, but we start working through some scenarios with them after a solid introduction and, and breaking down of, you know, bulleting the main, main points, the key differences, and then some policy practices. I think that would be, I think that would maybe get us, and I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing you say, Randy, is like doing those things would maybe get us to the point where we would be ready to adopt some policies in August that we would then use going forward. Does anyone have anything else, or is any concerns about that much being at this meeting, or?
From the reading and from the last couple of meetings that we've had, I keep on shifting my perspective to you, Randy, and how the whole goal is to kind of give the BRSU a clear guideline, yeah, yeah, to clarify things for, for you. But when you have the different boards coming up with policies, how do you rectify all of that? I keep on getting myself stuck when I'm thinking about it, through, going through the reading, is you have the different school boards, but then how does the BRSU rectify all that information? And maybe this is the wrong forum to have this conversation. Maybe it's during the retreat, I have this conversation, but I keep on getting stuck on, on that aspect.
Yep, so let's talk about it. Retreat's a great question. And essentially, what, what I would hope is that we get to a place in which the majority of, of policies are, are essentially the same, okay? And that's what happened with our, our definition of equity. And that's what happened with our, uh, our definition of equity. And you may decide as a board that you want to explore, including, um, an equity policy within your policies. But most of them should be fairly similar. What happens through the, and, and if, as long as we can operate from a place in which the, because the policies in education are guided by a very, very similar, stable framework. The, the specific nuanced language might change, but as long as we keep that, um, we keep it essentially the same, I'm going to be able to be fine with that. What happens is as, as I start providing you with, with interpretation of policy, which means essentially I review a policy under, um, under executive limitations, and that's the area that I'm really responsible for. I interpret and I look at like, okay, how do I interpret the definition of what this, what the language is? Okay? And I, I'll define it so that you can see, this is what I think it means. And then this is how I plan on collecting information. And this is how I'm going to hold myself and our system accountable to you. Okay? So you'll get that and we'll talk through it. And what will happen is most, I would anticipate that most things will, uh, make sense. But there are going to be discussion points. I'm going to let somebody in here, um, into the meeting. I don't know who it is, but I'm letting somebody in just so you know. Um, is that, that sometimes, and this happens with Taconic and Green where it's like my interpretation of something is different and we end up as a board and me talking about it. And I would say something like, you know, I wasn't really sure. And so I went with what was here. Like we ended up adjusting some of the language in one of the policies on the last policy because, because I went with the language that was in the policy, but the language in the policy wasn't actually saying what they intended. Which was a really great experience for the board to be like, we actually, it was about like going to a higher level within a financial, um, I can't remember the exact specific, uh, thing, but, uh, concept, but it was going beyond what would be, um, to be expected. And by doing that, it then created a situation in which the liability or the way the process would work through wasn't really what the board wanted. We don't want you to go to that. We just want you to do what you have to do. Because there was impact long-term. So then we changed the language, the board went through and changed the language and then I reassessed it. So if everyone's going rogue, it becomes an incredibly impossible system for me to manage. But as long as you stay within the, the framework that people educators are using, it's, it becomes a much more manageable approach.
Can anyone hear me?
Hi, Michael.
Oh my God, I'm so, I've been trying to get a hold through to you for the last 45 minutes. So I'm on the phone and I'm,
Of me?
No, just of, of the meeting. I'm sorry. I've had technical difficulties and frustration. Didn't mean to interrupt. Please proceed. I just wanted to make sure that I had a live, uh,
We're glad it's you.
Okay, thanks.
Michael, Phoebe got me on. I probably would have never, I probably still wouldn't be on if she didn't.
Oh my God, very frustrating.
So Michael, we're, to catch you up, we are right now on item number six of the agenda and we're just discussing, um, Randy reached out to Jackie Wilson and she is willing, um, to be, uh, to work with us doing policy governing consulting. And she's willing to be at the June retreat.
Thank you very much. I have been watching. I've just been unable to make myself known or to speak to anyone. And I finally realized, wait, I can call you on the phone. Okay, but thank you.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So do we, do you feel, Randy, that we have a place to get Jackie started? With this, does, is everyone comfortable with this? Is there anything more to add or something to take away?
I'll tell you, I think it's a great plan. I think it's achievable. I think that, uh, I, I would say that given the, the feedback and input that you've given, it's very likely that we, we won't have any issue executing. And at the end of the session, that whatever time it is that we allocate to this, you will feel much more clear about where you're going. Good list.
Okay. And so then the next step is to sort of identify an approximate timeframe that we would give to this. I mean, I can't see this taking less than an hour.
Yeah, I would probably say 90 minutes or an hour and a half, given what you just listed.
Yeah. I agree. And we'll put it down for 90 minutes. If we, uh, if we're done sooner, we're done sooner. Um, that makes sense to me. If that makes sense to everybody else.
Yep. That will work within 90 minutes.
Okay.
I think 90 minutes is good.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else on item six? Okay. Next up is the community engagement discussion. And Celeste put the, put all of that data together slightly differently for us to review this time. So I can't remember what page, that was packet page 11.
The page in 12.
Yep.
Which, which I have to say, the way it's laid out now, I greatly appreciate it.
Good. Well, Celeste, Celeste gets the kudos for it. She worked through it and went through it a couple of times and, um, I, I, I almost, we, I, you had made a recommendation as a board about, you know, the idea of consolidating one, two, and three into one, and then four, five, and six. But when we did that, it, it muddled things way up and became much more confusing. I was like, well, that is not going to help us move forward. So we stayed with this. So I just want you to know, it wasn't that we ignored it, but what it, because of the, because of the ranking of the form, trying to mush together one, two, and three, um, and four, five, and six, it beca- it just became more confusing because it made it look like four, five, and six were higher, which is really lower. I don't know if this makes sense to you.
Yeah.
Okay. And so then all of a sudden, when you looked at it, it made you feel like the four, five, and six were higher, but number six was the highest versus number four that was the highest, even though the low four was lower within that group. It just, you can hear just how confusing it was to try to interpret it. And I, I knew we would have spent a long time at this meeting trying to unpack that. So we did not include it.
Yeah. I still am so just confused by math fundamentals in this. It's like it's all over the place. That was like the one thing where I was like, okay, I'm looking at the top three and I'm like math. And then you go and you look towards the bottom and I'm like, it's math.
Well, it's, I think.
Everyone has a love hate relationship with math.
It's middle of the road though. It's not at the top. It's sort of like middle of the road.
Yeah.
Um, I think that that's, that's how I was interpreting it. Uh, because it came in highest as like the second thing. And then the middle of the pack, third and fourth and fifth, right? So it's sort of like, it was sort of moderate across. I think that's, that was how I was interpreting it.
Seems like the second chart is the easiest to kind of look at at a glance and get a handle on where people weighed in. I mean, and it is interesting that so much of the top stuff has to do with things like kindness and empathy and things like that versus math or something.
Right.
It was rated so highly.
Yeah. And it's funny on that second page of this, that critical thinking was ranked as like the most important of skills and values. And kind of, it kind of, I mean, it was, it was on one of the number one most important. It was like the second one ranked on that, but it also appeared towards the top of the bottom of five and six. So that was another one that was sort of like, where does that really fall? I was putting that somewhere in the middle and then you look at the next page and it's really not in the middle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And it's interesting because if I were to guess, you know, what the outcome would have been, I think this is useful because I think it, you know, it, it, it kind of opens our eyes to some of the important, uh, areas of importance for, for, you know, for our community.
I agree. I, I sort of feel like I ferreted out a, a small bit of a theme in this, although maybe I'm just wa- it's what I want it to be more than what I'm seeing. You know, I str- I struggle with like, am I, am I picking up every rock until I find exactly what I want underneath it? Um, but I mean, I see an importance of basic school stuff, right? Like the reading, writing, arithmetic, sort of three Rs are still fundamentally important in our community. But then the bigger other theme was sort of like the problem solving, communication, kindness and empathy, which almost are things that you could sort of lump together. Right? Like being able to put yourself in someone else's shoes and try to work together to solve problems. Like I sort of get that as like a group theme of those few things.
I wonder, you know, that you have kindness and empathy ranking, critical thinking, kindness and empathy is the top three. And just everything we've been going through in the last year or two. If it's just kind of where people's mindset was and just the need for that, you know? Uh, it's, I don't know. It's kind of leads to some interesting conversations.
And I wondered about kindness.
Survey like three years ago, if it would have been different. I guess is what I'm saying is that, are we in this bubble where people are really thinking about that stuff? That's, which is good, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Is that where we are or where we need to go? Like, or you, you know what I mean? Not in where we need to go, but where we're, where we would be in the future. Like, are we thinking in the moment or are we thinking forward? And I wondered about kindness and empathy as being separate, um, separate things. Rather than you like listing kindness slash empathy, because I wondered if people really fully understood like the difference between them and they were ranking them as separate items, or if they were sort of grouping kindness and empathy together?
Yeah, I think I was wondering that same thing. Um, it's hard to parse out the difference or say, you know, yeah, that makes.
I think when you, um, stray beyond those three Rs that you mentioned earlier, Julie, the, the, um, range of interpretation becomes much broader. When we're discussing things like empathy and social skills and so forth, I think it becomes a lot more of an interpretive thing based on, you know, um, an individual, uh, perspective. And when you're talking about reading, writing and arithmetic, they're kind of quantifiable, um, testable things. I don't know how you could test a student on how empathic they are. Or if we'd want to.
Well, that, that was the thing when looking at the data, I, I was, I'm kind of curious from the administrative or the educator side, which of these things are actionable items?
So Brooke, you at the last meeting had mentioned that you were going to be sharing the results of this survey with your teams. Did you get any, have any good discussions that you had? Like to address Anthony's question, did anything come up that seemed like these were actionable for your, for your team?
Absolutely. We had a really great, rich discussion, similar to how you felt. It was kind of hard for them to interpret some of the data, the way it was presented. So I'm eager to share these two things and I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. So I will scan them in and have the staff also see these results in that way. But I feel like the, um, mentioning kindness and empathy, being a good citizen are all social, emotional, learning things. So as you know, we have a goal for academics, but we also have a goal for social, emotional. So I feel like those are the skill areas that we feel and value the same way that we, we need to continue to teach students those. And that does happen through our, um, second step, which empathy is one whole unit that they teach across K to six. Um, and problem solving is another whole, um, element of our, um, curriculum. So I feel like it validates the importance of us to continue to teach those skills. And also using them daily when we have conflicts on the playground or other places is really utilizing and asking them what strategies that they could have used during those times. So I feel like it's important that the community agrees that they're important for us to teach and our staff also values it. And then having the materials, the next steps. I feel like there's always more we can do though, for sure. Um, and when you asked about like, how do we collect information? Uh, we've began that discussion and our social emotional team met on this past month. And one thing that we are talking about is how do we, um, use ODRs, like behavioral referral sheets to help us to figure out if our kids, you know, are doing better with those skill areas. So we need to work on that as a goal moving forward of making sure that we're keeping track of data based on be, um, behavioral referrals.
And just to provide a framework for Anthony's question, when, so part of this process for you as a board is taking this information and developing your ends policies. Okay. So that becomes a very broad, uh, policy related to, um, to, uh, academics, um, basically like you're talking about transferable skills. And it becomes a very broad, a broad policy. Then it's up to me to interpret what that means. And so your question then lands to me to say, what does this mean? Right? How do we, how do we provide an educational program? For lack of a better word, to guide the work. And so Brooke shared with you where things currently are. But some of that will, will potentially be adjusted as I work with our leaders to interpret what it means to work towards achieving those policies and meeting those goals. We would have conversations. So, so as we build this out a little bit, your ends policy, which is what I'm eager for. So I will say to you, that's what, when we talk about this community engagement, I am eager for you to take that next step of developing your policy, which is not big and long in detail. It's fairly broad. And then, and then we start to interpret it and we start to, um, look at what we currently have in place and what we need to do in order to adjust our practices to help work towards achieving the goal. And then you will see immediate connection between what the, the data at the Meadowee School and how Brooke is using current performance to make adjustments and tweak and establish goals based on your ends policies. So you may find through that process that your interpretation of her and my interpretation is not aligned with yours, or you may find that it really is, or it may lead to a very rich discussion of, of how and why did you select these areas? So it starts to take on a very different process. And so I'm just wanting to orient you to that because I think it helps to make sense of where we're going, um, in all of these areas. So important and a good question.
Which I, I also want to thank Celeste for sending out a couple of examples of the ends policies from, uh, uh, from some of the other boards. That was very much appreciated to get some insight as to how other, other boards are approaching it.
Sure. I will make sure she knows that. So pass it on.
Yeah, that's funny. Cause I was, as I was looking at the, at like packet page 12 and thinking about the, the tops of these and the bottoms of these, um, like computer skills and love of nature or respect for nature were so, were ranked so low. And it's kind of, you wonder is it just because it's omnipresent, right? Like we're on screens constantly. So that's not something we, we think we need to focus on. And then by virtue of the beautiful place that we live, so many people probably have a love of nature in their family life, and it's not something they think about wanting their children educated with. Because it's just an, it's just a constant source for them. But community pride, it was like, this is, I mean, I'm going to be thinking about that as we think about ends policies because we have such a, we're so focused on Meadowee being a community school. And I think it's a good thing that we have about our school. But seeing that where it's ranked and also thinking about the top, But seeing that where it's ranked and also thinking about the top. Ranking of empathy and kindness and consider like considering them maybe more global. Things, you know, like. We're we're thinking more, I think people now are thinking more beyond. How we can help our own community and more like how we can help our own country and like what what. Where empathy and kindness would be. Would be used outside of ourselves. It's interesting. It's going to be interesting to think about.
Yeah, I think that's that makes sense, the way you put it. I was trying to figure that out as well. And like Scott was saying that, you know, this is kind of a snapshot of what. What we have been dealing with, so it might have affected people and then. And then the community, let's see, community pride, but maybe good citizen citizenship is has. That's what that is, you know, kind of. Will feel that citizenship and it's not necessarily just that. You know, small town, it can be much bigger than that.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Being an optimist, I mean. You know, going through everything that's happened politically and with the virus and all the isolation and. You know, maybe that's the silver lining. Maybe this is the way people are thinking that moving forward. Those are the most important things that needs need to, we need to be focusing on in our community school or generally in our society or things of like empathy and kindness. Wouldn't that be nice? Uh, I I like it. I love the results. I think it'd be really fun to work with. I think it's a great direction as a school to be. You know, for that to be who we are, you know, a school that that represents kindness and empathy and. But yes, it's good. I like it.
I do wish, though, we could get an answer on the computer. It's that to me, so it's undeniable that that's absolutely necessary. Is it because it's built in or is it because? I will, it's hard to hard to understand why that is so low and consistently low. So it was not even. It wasn't even in the running ever, so.
Do you think that you hit the nail on the head on that? I think it's just built in. I think. We're all constantly on our computers, so I think people aren't as concerned that that's going to be a skill that's learned and taught. Maybe, I don't know, because it obviously it's undeniably important, but.
It's integrated into learning, just in general, and that it's not separate anymore.
Yeah, I think so. It would be like saying. You know, you need to have books in your school when we grow up. I don't know.
So then also, maybe that's a vote of confidence in how it has been integrated into. This school.
Yeah.
That one has has caused me some uh some uh some a lot of thought because I I'm an IT person. I I work in IT, so it's so. And critical to what I do as a living. Only thing I think of is is everyone's approaching it from the elementary school perspective where may where. You know, when I was going to school, computers were secondary. We were we were just learning that. Uh, like good keyboard skills in junior high school and then in high school really hammering that down. That's the one thing I can think of why I was ranked so low, but. I'm biased, I'm in the field.
Yeah, I I'm also have a a background in a sort of a propensity for IT. But I think that I was wondering because school was taught online, like. It it can't be for even for elementary school, you know, so that to me. That was where I was thinking the same thing. Maybe it was because they're so young and shouldn't have screen time or whatever, but. That that a lot of education was delivered over the computer this past year. So that it can't not be necessary. But, yeah. We have a different, we, I mean, it looks like we have a a different focus than what I was expecting, which is why we. Why the survey was important, you know?
Agreed.
Brooke, I'll be really um. Uh, I'll be eager to hear what now that you have in such a kind of clear. Chart of showing the findings, I'll be really curious to see what the staff has to say, what the teachers say and, you know, what their reaction is.
Definitely. It'll be great to follow up with you on that. I'll have someone take notes to make sure I have all the details.
I also thought it was great that we had nineteen eighteen business owners. Providing feedback on this.
I was, um, excuse me, a little. I didn't really look at the numbers too closely, but I noticed that there are like forty-two Paulette residents and fifteen. Rupert residents. I didn't know if proportionally that was sort of an equal amount relative to our towns' populations. And I know we're not supposed to be looking at them as separated things. Um, I just was a little. Disappointed that more Ruperters uh had not responded.
That that's something that you, I I know we we view it as one one community, um, but. As elected officials, you might can. I, we we have, yeah. That was that that number did stick out to me as well.
Yeah.
And I I think that kind of goes to the point of. How are we gonna communicate more with our our community? And that, yeah, and and maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit, but. I know in Rupert, a lot of it is face to face and maybe getting the school board meetings back to being face to face to. Get some more of that in um. To get some more of that involvement from the community is going to be very, very important.
I do, I I'm not sure that it's like. If you think about population size, I'm not sure that it's that far off.
In terms of the percentage of forty-five to twelve hundred and fifteen to whatever we are, six hundred.
Three to one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you when you think about it that way, I don't think that I don't, I find that number less concerning through that lens. But on the flip side of that. Out of our populations to have. Our combined populations to have only like fifty-seven. Responded. From. That whole number is. We're obviously still not getting to everybody, so this can't be the only community engagement that we. Perform. Oh, hi Kitty.
Well, I I I view these numbers as a starting point. So the the I don't I don't view as the end all be all. I I think it's a starting point of making, you know. So next year, how do we get more people to participate, to get more involved in this process, to give us that feedback that is necessary?
Right, so that that sort of comes into like next steps. Um, we need to. I I think that this stuff is helpful for us to bring to our retreat as we look. As we practice through policies and think about what are, what. Any tweaks that we would make to placeholder policies or or if we would just think about. Spending the next year not tweaking any policies and instead just coming up with new and different ways to survey our community. I mean, I was. I'm kind of happy with the number that we got, considering that we have these meetings and we have maybe one person watching on YouTube and we never have public comment. It wasn't a goose egg. We got responses.
True enough.
So I guess the next steps are we we're going to have this be a part of our retreat agenda. Um, and I think. Do you guys think that that focus should be on um specifically on next steps rather than more interpretation of this data?
I agree. Maybe we can work this from the angle of the um. Where on our inquiries, we have categories about, they're not in front of me now, but like community pride and civic involvement. Maybe we can lean on our our people who are already out of school, meaning our neighbors to. Step up a little bit more in terms of their own community involvement and attention paid to what's going on in the respective boards. Whether select or school or otherwise. It's it's a big, it's a big project.
And if we if we connect this on the agenda, Julie, to either before or after the um. The ends policy, we can have Jackie give you some. You know, work with you on on how you can take the community engagement data and use that to formulate your ends policy. Because that is the one policy that is really unique to you. And it's the North Star of everything else that happens.
Yeah, I was just going to say you were asking if we should spend any more time in the interpretation, and I think. I think we do need to. Talk about our interpretations and and how it relates to our ends policy. I was just going to say that I think. That was kind of the, really the main point of doing this is to. To help us shape that um with input from the community, not just our ideas, you know? So, um.
Yeah, I guess to clarify, what I meant was specifically for the retreat agenda, are we going. To spend time on delving deeper into the interpretation of this set of data? Or are we going to focus our time on? Next steps for more community engagement because we're going to be operating. With placeholder policies and not necessarily setting an ends policy based on this one survey.
How much time do we have, though? I mean, to do another survey or some kind of other thing that's gonna. I mean, you're talking about, that's a long way off. I mean, shouldn't we be starting to shape our ends policy? I think we kind of have to use this for now. Well, here's a question. I mean. We form an ends policy, is there anything that says that? I mean, over time that that evolves and and. You know, that that can be, you know, obviously you're not going to change it where it's completely opposite of what you've written, but it can certainly evolve, right? And be added to over time?
It certainly can. You do want it to be pretty stable, but uh but you also have uh the ability to adjust. I think what you'll find as you walk through this next step of the process. Is that you will land on a policy that reflects both. The values and feedback from your community members as well as your values and and priorities as a board. They they're broad enough that, you know. What I can hear you saying is it's a combination of right academic and transferable skills. And these are some of what we really prioritize, but we really want our students to. Be this, do this, accomplish this. And and it's going to, I think, it's going to encompass some combination of that because. That's really what twenty-first education is right now across the board. And in what you just talked about, the idea that. It feels, it feels good to understand and and hear that our. Our community values these transferable skills in addition to. You know, foundational academic skills, right? And to be able as a board to say, yes, we care about the academics and we care just as much. About problem solving and critical thinking and empathy and kindness, like. It it, I think you will find that as you work through the process that it ends up feeling pretty good because you're saying clearly. To me as a superintendent and to your teachers and your principal. This is what we value and we expect this to be a part of your educational program and we're going to expect it to be measured and prioritized. And we want to see our kids grow holistically.
So i- is it possible to correlate with the data that we got here, what programs or projects the BRSU and in Meadowwee and we have? That kind of address these different bullet, these different criteria?
Yes, so that then becomes my responsibility to whatever your ends policy is, to interpret and say, okay. How is this a part of our curriculum? How is it a a part of our instructional programming? How are we measuring it? How how are we able to say to you, yes, we're committed? Yes, we value it. It's in our program. We're about like, that is exactly how it works. And then we come back to you with that feedback. And if if I find that you list something and it doesn't. We don't do anything with it. It's then on my shoulders to do something about it because I have to respond to you as a board. And so you'll always keep coming back to what your ends policy is. And you should feel comfortable asking me at any point. What we're doing and how the programming is, and I have the responsibility to make sure that what's happening at Meadowwee School aligns with it because at the end of the day, it rests on my shoulders. And so my my accountability, you know, is is to them in order to be accountable to you. It's a pretty exciting, you can, I'm a little bit nerdy on this, but it's exciting for me, like I am excited about this next step because I think that. The possibilities and the way that this is going to come together is going to be very intellectually stimulating to me. And I think it's going to lead us to stronger, better outcomes for our kids, which um is what drives me more than anything else.
So I have a question on on this. I mean, obviously, the the whole point of engaging our community was to create ends policies, but I guess my specific questions about when. When we're working on this and what our next steps are would be to, so Randy, for you. I mean, will we be setting an ends policy at our retreat or will we be setting one in August? I mean, are we, are we going to be there or are we going to not be there for some time?
I think you can be there quickly. I I hear, I I believe that you are ready to start. Drafting something at your retreat. You are going to want to draft it and you are going to want to reflect on it. As individuals, and then you're going to want to come back together. So whether you can do it in two meetings, you might and you might not. You might have, you know, a couple of you who are like. I don't feel like it connects with this. I don't think that it reaches enough of this, or I think that. You know, you may find it smooth and you may find that you need a little time with it. I can't predict that, but I will say to you, you don't want to rush it. If there's, you know, as you're working through it. If you are, you know, you get sort of stuck on one portion of it. I would encourage you to take the time to keep working through it and talking through it until you land at that place. But I'll have Jackie stay and I'll make sure that Jackie understands the place you are and I'll have her be completely up to speed in the work you've done, your results. Um, so that she's also prepared to facilitate um an initial conversation with you to get you started on this. And I I will say one other thing on this because we haven't talked about this. And I would encourage us at the retreat to talk about. An additional piece of this work. What I'm hearing from all of you is some curiosity. Like I hear curiosity about what people were thinking, like what 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 drove some of this? And so you as a board might want to say. Maybe the answer is in another survey, but I I'm thinking you may decide that you want to have a board meeting in the fall in which you. You kind of, um, I I'm gonna, when you you've come together and you've had some community forums as you are preparing for the merger, right? Sharing information. You may want to um have a meeting in which part of the meeting, it's an open meeting and you engage in it with people in the public about. Their responses or their interpretations and you kind of take a deeper dive into it and try to get some more information, which I think frankly, pe- people who want to be invested would probably welcome that conversation with you. And I think you might be able to learn more about what your community members are thinking. So that was going to be another. A another aspect, Julie, that I was going to talk to you about, including in the retreat as it relates to this. And I, because I think it's possible and I think it's it's an important thing for you. That's what I'm hearing is that there's still some uncertainty.
Yeah, well, and to to be fair, I think that um there never will won't, there will never be. there will never be a time when we don't have some uncertainty because that's what, and especially if we're going to be a policy governance board, that's kind of what our job is, is to go into the community and, um, and see where everyone's at and what everyone needs and wants from our system. And that will, it's never going to be a stagnant thing. It's always going to be changing. So we need to, um, constantly be doing that. And so that's why I was concerned about like, we have four hours, right? So we wanted, I want to just use them to the best. And part of that is we're going to have next steps. The survey was, I, I never considered the survey to be the one, one true thing that we used. It was just a stepping stone. But I'm, I'm excited and hopeful to hear you saying that we'll be able to start working on the ends policies. Cause that's, I mean, for the three or however many years I've been on this board has been what I've been excited about. And it's kind of fun to think that we're going to get there. I did have one other question, Randy. I don't think I'm going to get an answer from you now, but there was, it was a while ago. It was when we were meeting in person. I think it was one of our last in-person meetings, um, Skylar came and we, I think it was about the new way of doing report cards. But I think that he specifically had slides where he talked about how progress was measured with some of, like, so he used some examples that were transferable skills. I feel like it would be helpful for us as a board to like look back through some of those specific skills that he talked and then the metrics that he, we use to measure them by. So if you could ju- if we could just get like a reminder of approximately when that was, I'm going to try to look it up myself. But I don't know if, if all of the new people on the board aren't going to have our old printouts. They can be found on BRSU website, but.
I will put it on my to-do list and we'll get, we'll get you what I think you're talking about. You can let me know if it's the right thing and we'll keep going back and forth till we figure it out. We'll figure it out. Scott, between Skylar and Celeste, we should be able to get closer to it.
And am I, Brooke and Randy, am I making sense in, in what I'm talking about? Like these, these skills and metrics would be helpful in our, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there are rubrics. Um, so we, we'll get them. They're not hard, even if we can't find the exact meeting, we can find the document you're referring to.
And then right now we, we had our focus on self-direction and communication as a transferable skills that we've been reporting on report cards. But there are others that we just haven't got to. But yes, absolutely. It's important for us to discuss that and just know um, our expectations and what we're assessing students on with those dispositions, the transferable skills.
Yeah. And I think seeing them, I mean, hearing Randy say, this is clearly like a combination of the basic, basic educational like goalposts and then transferable skills. It might be helpful for us to read through what, what you guys mean when you're talking about transferable skills as we're thinking through the lens of a, an ends policy. Perfect. Any other questions or comments on the engagement survey results and next steps? Okay, hearing none. Board updates. So, um, we have, what packet page is that? I think it's packet page 14 and 15 as a document that was uh, created by the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, which consists of Jim Salzgiver from Taconic and Green. Um, oh, I'm blanking on his name.
Dean.
Dean from Winhall.
Dean Giannotti.
From Winhall and myself from Medowee. So each, um, district is represented at the table on this. So I'm not gonna, I mean, there's a lot in this and then you guys all had it ahead of time. So I'm not going to read through everything, but it just like the gist of it is um, the proposed process that we would like to move forward with evaluating the superintendent is really three things. Which is annual goal setting by the superintendent. And so that happens every year. And then at the retreat would be an opportunity to go through the previous year's goals and check in on where we are at that and also set new goals. And so that would be up to Randy. Those are goals for Randy. So it would be a shortlist, like three to six. We discussed having these be some longer-term goals and some shorter-term goals. And, um, these are goals that are across the SU. So some of them may be critical goals for like a non-operating district such as Winhall and wouldn't mean that much to Medowee, but they're still important SU goals. And then there would be some other goals that maybe would be much more relevant to us and less relevant to like TNG or Winhall. And then the other two pieces of this are surveys. And so one of them is the superintendent survey of school employees, um, which would be crafted by Randy with input from the board. And the other is a survey that would be crafted by the BRSU Evaluation Committee. And that would be of the school boards. So, and then the, the other key is that this is on a rotation. So we would be doing two things every year. The annual goal setting is annual, so it's every year. And then a survey occurs every year. So this year, the survey is going to be Randy's superintendent survey, which she's already put out. Um, she's given it over to the new human resources person and the, the questions are already set and submitted to, through, is it Laura? Am I remembering her name correctly? Thank you. Um, so Laura has, has taken over that and sent those survey questions on. Um, and then next year will be a survey of the board. Um, but just a quick, so Randy's survey has four sections. Um, and each of these sections have, um, several performance indicators per section and they're all ranked. So, um, they're ranked as exceeds, meets, or does not meet expectations. And the four sections are leadership and district culture, curriculum planning and development, or curriculum planning development, instructional leadership, values and ethics of leadership. So, I could, I can actually send on those questions to you all if you would like, um, with all of the performance indicators. So you can see it's a pretty involved survey. Um, but I think, you know, it highlights four main categories that I think are important. And I think this is a good, I think it's a good place for us. I think it's important for us to evaluate Randy as the work that she's doing when it comes to us as boards, but I also think it's really important for us to hear from the people that she works directly with. Um, I don't know how we could evaluate, how we can evaluate her performance without talking directly to the people that she supervises. Cause we're laypeople. We're not educators. We're not administrators. I think it's a good place. And if you guys have any questions, I can try to answer them or any concerns.
I can just clarify one thing if you want, Julie, just, so this, the, the framework is based on AASA standards for superintendents. So the, the indicators, um, the area as well as the components are not, it's not something that was developed internally. They're based on the standards of an effective superintendent. So it's kind of designed on a three-year cycle. So the first year were the categories that Julie talked about. And then there's, again, the, another grouping of the, um, of the standards are more related to board work. So the idea was that you would pull those standards that are, so it's another group of standards. And then in the third year, there'd be a balance, the remaining standards that would go back to the employees of the BRSU. So that's the three-year cycle. So essentially, if you're looking at the bigger picture, over every three years, the superintendents evaluated on all of the standards. And so then that rotation over time would happen, assuming somebody stayed in the position for that period of time. And then the goals continue to be set. So we did complete the survey and it finished, closed on Friday. I just, um, I just received, uh, access to the results so that I could review them. Um, we had 166 respondents, um, which I was very, very happy about. Um, so it was basically the ranking that Julie said, you know, meets, succeeds, or does not meet expectations. And then there was a place for comments. And, um, there were many, 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 many comments. I, it's going to take me a while to get through them. Um, uh, but I am very appreciative of that and I think it's a, a good sign. I want our people to be honest. I want us to be eager for feedback and I want us to be leaning into the feedback. Because, um, it's important for us, for me to learn. It's important for us as leaders to learn. It's important for teachers to be learning. And so, um, so what I will do is I'll start reviewing that and then, um, work with Laura to kind of assimilate the information and put it into a format that I will be public with. Um, I think it's important for me to be able to capture what folks said and to share that with you as board members and with our teachers. I think it's important for them to recognize our employees that they hear me and, um, to talk things through and to not have a situation in which they provide this feedback and then it's cricket, right? Like nothing happens. So, um, so it's, it's a new process we talk about. I talked about performance management at the beginning of this meeting and revamping that through our system. This is also a revamp of my performance. And I'm eager to learn and receive the feedback and use it to, you know, direct my work and guide my work moving forward.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on that part of board updates? Okay. Um, the other distribution we had was an, an update from Jim Salzgiver. Um, he did offer to come tonight if I wanted him to. And I, I told him I didn't think that we needed him because I felt that we were, I felt that we had two pretty big discussion items on our agenda and I didn't, um, I didn't know that we would have the bandwidth to really deep dive in the legislative updates. But, um, he was happy to answer any questions. So if you guys have any questions on anything, I would pass those along to him and, and get some answers for you. I certainly am not going to pretend I can answer them. Okay. Does anyone else have any updates? Okay. Our next meeting is the retreat, which is the 7th of June, nine to one. Eat Wheaties that morning. It's going to be a big day. Um, and a self-evaluation.
Julie, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If, if you're allowed to meet in person on June 7th, do you want to do that as a board? I'm happy to look into it and see and kind of push that forward. Um, but I wanted to check, right now they're still holding pretty firm that they don't want board meetings. But I am curious about your interest in that as a board, if it becomes an option. And, um, I'm happy to advocate if it's something that you value and you'd like to do if you can.
I would be happy to just ask everyone how they, where they stand on it individually. I will be, I will be vaccinated by then and be more than 10 days out. So I would like, i- if we could, that's mine.
I would like, I would like to do it in person if we could too, and I am vaccinated at this point.
In person, vaccinated.
Okay, we got three.
I got my, I'm getting my second, uh, shot next week. So I'll be vaccinated for it.
I am vaccinated currently.
And I'm vaccinated as well. So Anthony, Cory and Michael, would you be interested in it being in person with your vaccination status?
It'd be harder for me um, in the morning, but, uh, I'm flexible. Yeah, I can do either whichever way.
I think we would get so much more out of it.
Yeah.
It's a long time to be doing a Zoom meeting and it's just, it's just not the same, you know? I think, what a, what a nice, wouldn't that be nice if we were able to meet in person after all of this as a retreat? It would be kind of like,
It's a retreat, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, you know, it'd be a nice way to like break out of this damn COVID thing.
It would be a treat of a retreat.
I know, yeah.
Still, right Julie?
I would, I would prefer to meet live.
Okay, Randy, I think you have your answer.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I, I, it's just been on my mind and I felt like I wanted to check in with you about it um, at the meeting. So we'll see and maybe Julie, between the two of us, we can connect with the SBA and with the AOE and um, see, we've got a month to, to see where they land. I think it's coming. You know, if it's, if it's like June 1st that we're allowed, I, it's, it's a possibility, I think. So we'll, we'll connect about it.
And where would it be if, would it be at the BRSU or at Medowee?
I don't know. Well, I don't, I, I'm open to wherever you want to go with that. But part of that will be whether or not, we could probably make the argument that it's, you know, school-related uh, important information, because during the day, so it'd be tricky if they're doing, having a class.
Traditionally, it wasn't BRSU.
Yeah, that's typically where we've done it, but it, there is something appealing. I'm confident you would agree at doing it at the school, but I don't know that we'd be able to pull that off um, that week, especially it's the last week and they're doing all kinds of fun things and.
Yeah, I forgot about.
That day is field day.
Okay. So what about another community facility? Like, well, we were having the Rupert Library as our other spot. Just there's other possibilities, I guess.
So we can change the, certainly change the retreat if we're able to, the location. So people be thinking about it and we can, when we, whenever we post the meeting, we'll just put the location that people just, we decide on. So think through it.
Okay. And we can, I mean, you guys can always communicate through, through me. So we won't be violating open meeting laws by discussing this. We, you can just let me know your thoughts.
All right, sorry.
I'm ready if you're ready.
I, I am ready. Okay, so the board self-evaluation, level of engagement. I say hi?
Say hi.
Yeah, I, I think we had great discussions tonight.
Again, another very productive and, yeah, dynamic, I think even. Was the agenda followed? Yes?
Yes. And I went through this ahead of time with Randy, but I feel like we did good. We like had something to discuss in the consent agenda and we did it and.
That's good. Yeah, that is right. So that also goes down to the consent agenda. So I actually had a question about this. The agenda linked to work plan. We didn't have, there was a presentation or it's, I think it said presentation on the work plan and that wasn't on?
You're at, you're right. That's a hundred percent on me because I forgot to tell Brooke. So we can put that, um, we can, we'll think through it, but that's on me and I apologize for that. Um, it was a breakdown on my end. So I apologize for that.
I just was wondering, um, sometimes there are sort of legacy things that make it onto the work plan. So I wasn't sure if it was that or the other. Okay.
It was a mistake on my part. So I apologize to all of you for that.
Okay, so sufficient time spent on community engagement?
Yes.
The ends discussion, I think we did like a preliminary kind of talking about how to achieve an ends discussion. That's my take on it.
We did. So Randy, in real life, we're a policy, like fast forward into the future, we're a policy governance board. We're all the way in it. Are we going to be having ends discussions at every meeting? Or is it just going to be sort of the central theme that like everything revolves around, but it isn't really discussed?
I don't know. We don't talk about it at TNG every meeting, but it really is, again, the North Star. So the, it's something to think, to think about. And it's an area for me to learn about and understand more. Because there are a number of things that would link to that. It would be, you know, goal setting for me. goal setting for the, for, for Brooke, progress monitoring, giving an update mid-year, right? Giving an end, you know, the, that's only a couple of times. But I would say ends policy work is related to presentations, right? Whether there's a learning presentation or a teaching presentation. Every one of those things is a link to ends policies. Because, so, so we all start looking at that, those things differently. And what will happen is instead of sort of randomly looking for an example, Brooke will know what her goals are. She'll know what the focus area is. And she'll be presenting to you examples of work towards achieving your ends policies in her school goals. So I think it's probably possible that you would do it fairly regularly. I don't see you doing it every meeting, but.
Would it be something like we would check in at the end and just say, where, where, did we have, can we at an instance in which we were working toward the ends policy?
In, in reading the other ends policies, I almost view it as, almost like their mission statements, goals to work towards. So even if we, if we just reminded each other, ourselves at the beginning of each meeting, once we have an ends policy of what that is. I, I, I think that's important.
Yeah, it might be something you consider, you know, adding to your operating norms. And like a reading of your ends policy to remind us all of the focus of why we're here and doing what we're doing.
Okay, executive limitations. So we talked about that as well.
Yeah, that was, we hit on that briefly, but I think we're, that's going to be something that we'll get to more when we're hitting the point that TNG is at, where they're really reviewing interpretations of policies. Of your interpretations, Randy.
The consent agenda used appropriately and we say yes and get a little star for that one.
We get gold stars.
Yay. Okay, what, what, well. All of it? I liked the discussion. I mean, I liked the, the survey results discussion was, was really fascinating to me. And that is very promising. I'm excited about that. I don't want to be the only one saying what went well. So I'll look for any other thoughts.
I think our, our policy governance process, we're, we're, I mean, we came together in figuring out what we wanted to, to give to our consultant to go through with us. I mean, that was, that's work that we did and good work.
True, yeah.
I think once again, everyone kind of weighed in and listened to each other and just great exchange of ideas. And, and kind of, I think, a really good plan for the, for the retreat. You know, I think it just all came together really nicely. So.
All right. Does anybody have concerns? I don't actually.
Mike, do you have tech concerns?
Okay, tech. That's a good one actually though. And hope for this meeting to be improved.
Live and in person. So I don't have to get tortured by all this technical devising.
Yes.
The opening, you took it nicely down.
In all seriousness, that may be something that we wish to discuss. I will say, so Polit, their select board is discussing moving forward. If we're start, as we start having in-person meetings, having some sort of hybrid system set up so that we can still, because we have a lot of participation in the select board meetings in town now that it's on Zoom. I mean, we don't have, we don't have that. So maybe it's a moot point for us, but it's something to think about.
It seems like we don't want to, right, the hybrid is the good approach because we, we don't want to block off that avenue potential for people. But if it isn't being used, it's harder to justify if.
Right. We can add that to the like regular meeting agenda at the retreat for you to talk about as a board, if you'd like.
Yeah. I, I wondered also relative to participation, even in the midst of the Zoom method that we're using, if there's some way, can you put out on front porch forum or other formats that we're having a school board meeting tonight? And we'd love for you all to drop in.
All right. Do we currently put it, Bob? Do you know on the Meadowe's, on Meadowe's Facebook page? I know, I, I'm not sure.
No, we haven't. We, we, we did it, you know, during the budget deliberations, we used it then. And anywhere, the press covers it pretty well. So that maybe that, you know, because the press covers those, those kinds of meetings, the public doesn't come in. But we, we, we could do it. I mean, it's easy to do and social media would be fine for that.
It seems like that might help to generate a little more, I don't know, attendance at these meetings, even if they're virtually held.
Yeah. And, and, and we, why not try, you know?
Right.
It doesn't cost us a thing.
Who would be doing that? The Facebook and front porch forum?
I would be doing the Facebook or someone in school, but we don't really do anything on the, on the other forum.
We, we could, we could start with, with Facebook and maybe share it with some of the forums, you know, that are on Facebook.
Right. Or I think Michael had mentioned the front porch forum, which is that, yeah.
I can do one, but can you just, I, I feel like I'm on, is the Polit one the same as the Rupert one? Or are there two different ones?
There are two different, Polit and Wells and then Rupert and Dorset, I think, or something.
So I think I'm only through Polit Library signed up to be on the Polit one, but I can add the Rupert and I can do that.
We can ask Celeste to help out as well too, if we get a, you know, a more concrete list.
Okay.
I forget Deb, I don't recall seeing something from Deb, but I, about this meeting. She has been sending them out through the Polit listserv, but did she do that automatically or do we have to send it to her first?
I forgot about doing it. I got hers already. She does do it. I saw her agenda go out.
Oh, it did go out. Okay. Sometimes I miss it because there are so many meeting agendas that get, go through that. But okay. All right. I think that was, I have all of this compiled. And then I'll try to do, should I do this for the retreat? Put all the answers together for these? We were talking about reviewing the answers to our self-evaluation every several months. Wait till later.
Um, do you, how do you feel about this, Randy? I feel like we have a lot going on at the retreat. Do you want to put that on August to do in August? Or do you think we'll have time at the retreat?
I think that you could probably add it to the, to the meeting part of the agenda if you want.
Okay.
Not sure how many. I think there might be three.
Yeah, I would, yeah. I mean, but don't go crazy. It's not my place to say that.
Maybe just put a five in a time period on it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be much. I'm sure. It's because they're pretty, I mean, from my recollection, they're pretty consistent too. I just think that it's nice to revisit these answers every so often so that we make use of them and kind of keep, keep going in the direction if we think it's positive.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay. So is there any public comment?
There's still only one person watching and I think it might be me.
Hi. And I don't really have anything to add. And I don't think we have anybody at the meeting either.
Okay, perfect. Hearing none. I will adjourn this meeting at eight 12 PM. And thank you, everybody.